Well, that was beautiful. That was the Tin Family? Is that correct? Take stand-up, please. Let everybody see you. Hi, well done. How beautiful that was. I'd like to call this meeting of the Temecula City Council to order live from downtown Temecula. Let's start off our meeting. It's always good to start off with an invocation. We have Sylvester Scott from Temecula-Bahai Community. Sylvester, come on down. I'm gonna ask everybody to stand and then stay standing for the flag salute by Councilmember Schwank. Please stand.
Oh, thou forgiving God, these servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. Oh God, make their hearts good and pure in order that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits that the light of the Son of Reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes that they may be perceived thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. Oh Lord, verily we are weak, but thou art mighty. Verily, we are poor, but thou art the rich. We are the seekers, and thou art the one sought. Oh Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us. Bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom. That we may drink deep of the water of life, may be enkindled by the fire of thy love, and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. Oh God, my God, cast upon this gathering the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. Oh Lord, bestow thy gracious aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lies beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is a nice service. Oh Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. So for this esteemed nation to be held in honor and enabled it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
Amen. Thank you.
Please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready to begin?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, can you call that roll?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
And Mayor Nigard?
I am here. This is the public comment portion of the meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
We do, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, how many?
Four.
Four? Do we have a video?
We do.
I'm Jeff Lawrence, resident of Temecula for over 25 years. A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Thank you. Can we have the first speaker, please?
Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Taylor Pagel, to be followed by Craig Puma.
Ms. Taylor, good to see you again.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers, and Committee Members. My name is Taylor Pagel, and I attend Great Oak High School. I'm Ambassador Girl Scout in Troop 1162, and I'm currently working on my Gold Award. This is the highest award a Girl Scout can earn with less than 6% of all Girl Scouts earning the award. To receive this award, a Girl Scout must identify an issue within her community and create a solution that will have a lasting impact and be sustainable. For my Gold Award, I'm creating a basketball program for young athletes with disabilities called Gifted Hoops, which will be hosted at Great Oak, July 29th through 31st, in the basketball gym under the instruction of head girls varsity coach, Sadiki Ellis. I wanted this program to be my Gold Award project because I was involved in Peer Buddies while I attended Gardner Middle School. The Peer Buddies Program pairs children with and without disabilities together, where they soon develop friendships, and has strong impact on my life. Additionally, I noticed that there's a lack of opportunity for children with special needs when it came to their limited options for sports programs. I wanted to do something similar to the phenomenal soccer programs such as Kick with Nick and Top Soccer. However, I wanted to create a basketball program due to basketball being an important factor in my life as I am also a student athlete on the girls varsity basketball team at Great Oak. There have been many people that have helped me to complete this project. Begin with Natalie Gray, who is in charge of Top Soccer, is my project advisor, and has been extremely helpful in guiding me through the process of creating this camp. She is present here today in the back with her family. Additionally, Ruck Orthodontics, incredible local orthodontist, has graciously agreed to supply Gifted Hoops with all camp T-shirts needed. Time-stayed still photographer, who takes live-action shots for all different sports for max preps and professional sports teams in Southern California, has volunteered to take live-action shots at the camp. Finally, LA Sparks is donating tickets for all participants to attend a basketball game on Sunday, August 11th, at the Staples Center, where they will receive MVP treatment. I am here today to ask if the city of Temecula would help get the word out regarding the camp. In addition, I would greatly appreciate any volunteers from our first responders for the duration of the camp. Although this is not a requirement, it is a safety precaution we would like to have. I invite you all to come out to the camp and see the young athletes in action. Thank you for taking the time to make this camp a yearly tradition and for helping the community of young athletes with disabilities, gain new opportunities to partake in different sports programs.
Taylor, thank you for coming tonight, and I want you to stay there for just a second because I have a few things to say. Taylor came to see me and Kevin Hawkins and Kevin Staff, and we were the last people she came to see. When she came to us, she had this all lined up. Everything in place, all the sponsorships, all the forms. Everything was ready to go, and she came to us and said, "Would Temecula help us get the word out?" Of course, we have a criteria we need to follow, and Mr. Hawkins, I presume we're following it? Okay? And so the city is sponsoring this along with Taylor. You know, I wanted you to know how much I appreciated not only your work in getting this set up, but also your participation in the Peer Buddies Program. By what you're doing in other Peer Buddies and how you've taken it to the next level, I can't express how valuable the Peer Buddies Program is to those colleagues of yours, your co-students who have disabilities or special needs. It makes them feel wanted. It makes them feel part of the school, part of the community. It brings them out of the shadows, and it makes them feel loved. So I wanted to thank you publicly in front of the entire city council. Good job. We're proud to be a sponsor with you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Craig Puma, to be followed by Jim Dedrick.
Ah, Mr. Puma, always a pleasure.
Mr. Mayor.
Been getting some sun, I see.
Say again?
You've been getting some sun, it looks like.
I did.
Yeah.
Little bit of golf, little bit of tennis. Mr. Mayor, city council, staff, and mainly the city of Temecula and the people that watch this program, I know the people out there watching. I can email you all this information, but I really want to come out and do a little bit of information for you so that the city of Temecula can see what we're doing in Old Town. Excuse me. The Old Town Temecula Association, which I'm president of, is an association of merchants and residents here in Old Town, and we really work hard to promote and protect the historic value of Old Town as well as the businesses that have a presence in Old Town. We do a few things that we're proud of. We do a map. I've given you each our most recent map, as well as a small card that gives you access to the CityBuy app. It's actually a program that was introduced to me by our city assistant manager, Greg Butler. And CityBuy app has partnered with us to create memberships and membership opportunities to have a presence in Old Town through social media. What we've recently added, and there's a lot of different things on there, so I would ask that the city residents go to their app store on their cell phones, go to CityBuy app, no spaces, Temecula, and just explore because there's all sorts of information about wine country, as well as Old Town and all of Temecula, including by request of our councilman Zach Schwank, if you go to the parking section, it'll actually tell you exactly how many parking spaces are available at our city parking structure, which is also available on our city app that you have. And this is just adding to that information that people can get. So we're very excited about the CityBuy app program that we partnered with. We're excited about our map that you have here. I'm working with Christine Damco, our economic development administrator, and we're hoping to have this map up on all of the kiosks that are in town, which there are five kiosks. So as visitors come throughout our community here, they can see the map that you see here on that kiosk that has the businesses listed, and people can look to see exactly where they can eat, dine, shop, do whatever they want to do in Old Town, explore. So we're excited about that kiosk program as well. Lastly, I just want to point out that you're all familiar with our Holiday Taste of Old Town, which happens the first Wednesday or Tuesday in December, depending on the time of year or the year. We're introducing the Summer Sunset, excuse me, Summer Sunset Taste of Old Town. That's on July 30th, and tickets can be attained on our website, which is OldTownTemeculaAssociation.org. And you can buy tickets to walk Old Town, enjoy the taste of Old Town, similar as our Holiday Taste of Old Town, only it's the summer taste of Old Town. So it's a lot of fun. We're looking forward to it. And that's it for me. I'm really excited about the things that are happening in Old Town and with our association. We currently now have more members than we've ever had in the last 10 years. We're a 10-year organization. We have over 65 members on our Platinum Program, an additional 32 on our Premium Program, and our last mixer, which was visited by a couple of different city staff members, our police department, and over 70 members of our community. So we're really excited about what's happening with our organization, probably the strongest it's been in the last 10 years. So very excited.
Thank you for all you do in Old Town. We appreciate that.
And thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
You betcha. Next speaker, please?
Have a great day.
Oh, thank you. You too, Craig.
The next speaker is Jim Dedrick, to be followed by our last speaker, Jan Geller.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and esteemed council members. I was privileged to speak before you a few months back to speak out against short-term rentals. This affects me very closely because I have an Airbnb directly across the street from me, and it's been a nightmare since April of last year. And I, Mr. Stewart, you had mentioned that one of the problems with that is, of course, you never know who is there. The safety, our children are not safe. They can't play in their neighborhood because there's constantly cars coming and going all the time. It's the same story day after day there. There are three or four cars will pull up. Before you know it, there's eight or 10. They arrive drunk, they leave drunk. We've had no less than nine incident reports with our fine city police. I hate to call them because they have more important things to do, but sometimes it's out of hand. In the past week alone, we've had three incidences of disturbing the peace, and it will not go away. The owner, I found, has since sold the property, but that hasn't stopped him from continuing the illegal Airbnb. So I'm excited to see about your proposal, and thank you for listening to us because it's a serious issue. Our children can't ride their bikes in the street. Saturday morning, I pulled up my garage. I was getting ready to go down to the store to run some errands. I couldn't even believe there was a party bus blocking my driveway. And that's our life for the last about 13, 14 months. So thank you for all you've done, and it's my prayer that you'll agree to follow up with all of these here so we can get some teeth into this and we can have some fines.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. And we're not able to discuss it tonight because it's not on the agenda, but duly noted.
Okay, thank you.
And a quick question for you, Mr. City Attorney. Currently, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay.
I just had a quick question. Currently, they're illegal in Temecula, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I wanted to, anybody operating an Airbnb or a short-term vacation rental is operating illegally?
That's correct.
Okay, and when do we expect this? Sometime this year or shortly thereafter?
Probably in a month or so.
Oh, that's soon.
Maybe a little bit later, yeah.
Okay, very good. So there you go. Make sure you're here when it's on the agenda, and you need to make those phone calls if something illegal is happening. So your phone calls are not in vain. Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, our final speaker is Jan Geller.
Good evening, Jan.
Good evening to you, Mr. Mayor, to all your council members, and to the staff members. My name is Jan Geller, as you know, and I'm on the executive board of Michelle's Place, and I am here tonight to say thank you so very much for all that you have done to make Michelle's Place what it is today. And I'm very excited to announce that we closed on our forever home on June 26th. So, thank you. Calling Michelle's Place is the tears coming. You just, it's just, you just can't help it. Anyway, the city of Temecula was very instrumental in helping us to make sure that we were able to close. So we just want to let you know how much we appreciate your support of Michelle's Place. On behalf of the executive board, the staff, the volunteers, and all of the thousands of patients that we are going to be able to help that are dealing with cancer day in and day out, we just want to let you know how much we appreciate you, and we know how much you have done for us. And with that said, we have made, had a plaque made to thank you guys for all that you do for Michelle's Place and all the families that we serve. So thank you so very much from the bottom of my heart and everybody at Michelle's Place. So thank you.
If I may, a couple of comments. First of all, you're thanking us, and you're welcome. But in so many ways, we need to thank you and all the work Michelle's Place has done in this community, helping those starting out with breast cancer, but now you've expanded to help with all cancers. And that is a really worthy cause to get behind. So I think it's more than our pleasure. It's our honor.
And the other thing, too, is I just want to also emphasize that we, in Temecula, we are the only regional center like this in the whole region of cancer centers. So we, not only do we have our forever home, we are providing a service that just isn't available to people. So, again, thanks.
Well, I'm gonna say two other things. We could not have concluded our cancer task force without the help of Kim and Michelle's Place, and that did tremendous amount of work. The other thing is, I think this issue is worthy enough where I think, I'd like the entire city council to come down and pose for picture with the plaque. And if you don't mind, Kim and Al and the rest of you, come on up and let's take that photo, okay?
Mayor, one other thing. Kim will kill me if I don't say this.
Yeah.
She's kind of like that sometimes. We also would like to invite you. We are having a special signing on July 16th at 5:30 at Michelle's Place, and we would love to have you all come and say hello and so we can welcome you and show you what we are continuing to do. So that's July 16th at 5:30, so I hope we see you all there. Thank you.
Let's take a quick picture. All right. Madam City Clerk, any more comments? All right. We're gonna go to city council reports. I trust nobody has any report. I'm looking for every...
I do.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Stewart.
Okay, so I met with the Motor Maids Convention this morning, which I don't know if you guys heard the rumble going through Old Town? Oh, there we go. Just like, not even an hour ago, they actually, 300 motorcyclists, all women,
I heard it all the way to my house.
rode through Old Town, yes.
Heard it all the way to my house.
So, great group of gals, and it was a fun morning, so that's it.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Then we're gonna move over to the consent calendar. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be OSO routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. The mayor does not encourage this tonight. Okay, I'm just kidding. Obviously, pull it if you need to pull it. We're just in a summer joking mood, folks. One, wave reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of June 25, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands, the checks rewrite. Four, adopt ordinance 19-10, amendment to chapter 5.22 of the Temecula Municipal Code Massage and Massage Establishments. This was at the request of subcommittee members, council members Edwards and Ron. This is a second reading of that ordinance. Five, approve the five-year agreement for phlebotomy services with American Forensic Nurses, Inc., doing business as AFN for the Temecula Police Department. Six, approve a cooperative agreement with nonprofit R. Nicholas Foundation in support of various human services programs and activities at the request of yours truly. Seven, approve an agreement with Musson Theatrical, Inc. for the replacement of the Old Town Temecula Community Theater Projection System Equipment. Eight, adopt a resolution to authorize application for and receipt of SB2 Planning Grants Program Funds, Long Range Planning Project Number LR19-0274. Nine, approve the amendments to annual agreements for fiscal year 2019-20 for routine maintenance, on-call, and emergency services for various operational needs for the Department of Public Works Maintenance Division. Ten, award a construction contract to All-American Asphalt for the pavement rehabilitation program citywide. Rancho Vista Road, Paseo Galita to Butterfield Stage Road, PW19-01. Eleven, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for French Valley Parkway Interchange Environmental Mitigation PW dash, rather PW02-11EM. Twelve, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for sidewalks, Old Town Improvement Projects, from Mercedes Streets, from 4th Street to Sam Hicks Monument Park, Public Works Project 17-04. And ladies and gentlemen, you can see if we did each one of these items. We'll be here till midnight, so I'll take a motion on the consent.
Could I pull item number two?
Sure.
I'm just kidding.
You're a funny guy.
Right.
All right. Well, I'll let you make the motion.
I'll so motion.
Okay.
Second.
All right. All in, well, cast your vote or the city clerk will stare at me. Hold on a second. All right. There you go. And that passes 5-0. All right, moving right along. We're going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting. I'm gonna turn the gavel over to the President of Temecula Community Services District, President James Stewart.
I would call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Clerk, please note, we're all here. Are there any public comments? Okay. So alls we have is the consent calendar, which is item number 13. Approve the action minutes of June 25, 2019.
Move consent.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All right. That passes 5-0. Directors' Report.
Yes, Mr. President.
Yes.
As you know very well, Summer Fund for the Entire Family continues with the Summer Concert Series on Thursdays at the CRC Temecula Amphitheater and Moonlight Movies in the Park on Fridays at Temecula Hills and Harvesting Community Park. And also, a special thank you to all the city departments represented by my colleagues up here for the tremendous behind-the-scenes work and efforts that helped to make the Fourth of July Parade, fireworks, and park celebrations so successful. All of your shops were truly don-tastic. Thank you very much, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. General Matters' Report?
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Any Board of Directors?
Quick one. Sorry.
Go for it.
No, I just, I needed to echo Mr. Hawkins' comments. As Mayor, I sent out an email to the city manager, and I hope you disseminated that. You get 10,000 to 12,000 people down in Old Town and had just a wonderful vibe for the parade. You get them all out, party all day, get 25,000 people down at the sports park, and a fantastic show. I don't know, I didn't hear of any arrests. I didn't hear of anybody disorderly. How does that happen? Only in Temecula, you get that type of vibe. So, well done. I wanted to say it publicly so everybody would hear it. Again, well done. That's it.
Very good. All right. Move? Anybody wanna move for German?
I move it.
All right. Second? Okay, it's been moved second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And all agree.
All right. I'm gonna call to order the successor agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, all of us are here. Do we have any public comments? All right. So we have one item on the consent calendar. Approve the action minutes of June 25, 2019. I'll take a motion.
Still moved?
All in, actually, cast your vote. Here we go. I expect that to pass. 5-0. Executive Director, do you have any SARDA reports?
No SARDA reports tonight.
How about my Board of Directors?
Negative.
I'll take an adjournment until July 23rd.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Let's see. I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. We're in the public hearing portion of our meeting. I'll read the rules because we have one item. Any person may submit written comments to the city council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. Item 15, conduct the Linfield School Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, also known as TEFRA, hearing approving of tax-exempt obligation for construction and renovation of facilities at Linfield Christian School and join California Enterprise Development Authority. Can we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I consult the city attorney, but since I share a common boundary with Linfield School, I think I have to recuse myself.
Okay, which means you leave the dais?
You betcha.
And Ms. Edwards, it'll be totally up to you whether you want to come back, but this is really the last item on the agenda, and I know you have some issues.
Have a lovely week.
Thank you. She has issues, but I didn't mean it in that vein. God bless you. You're very welcome. Can we have a... Can we have, as soon as she leaves, we'll have a staff report. The rules of the Fair Political Practices Commission say she has to be out of the room before we hear the item. And she is gone. Can we have a staff?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, as you mentioned, we're here tonight to hold the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act hearing, otherwise known as TEFRA, for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. More specifically, before the council tonight, for consideration is our two resolutions. First, a resolution approving the city's joining of the California Enterprise Development Authority, otherwise known as CEDA, and I will refer to it as such throughout this presentation, as an associate member. And second, a resolution approving the issuance by CEDA of revenue obligations for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. So what's the purpose of a TEFRA hearing? It is a public hearing required by the IRS Code to be held before the applicable elected representative body, in this case, that would be the city council, prior to revenue obligations or any other debt obligation being issued. The TEFRA hearing purpose is to allow interested persons an opportunity to express their views for or against the issuance of a revenue obligation, or, in other words, a bond. Linfield has requested, not from the city, but from CEDA, that they go ahead and issue tax-exempt revenue obligations. Those obligations would not exceed 25 million, and the funds are purported to be for financing, refinancing, the cost of acquisition, development, construction, equipment, and furnishings of the campus. The California Enterprise Development Authority, otherwise known as CEDA, was formed in 2006 to assist for-profit, nonprofit corporations and other entities with obtaining financing for projects that serve the public interest, such as schools. Currently, there are over 200 member jurisdictions. So what is the city's role? The city's role is, first, the request was made to hold a TEFRA hearing, so that's what we're doing, and that's required by the IRS Code. The city would need to join CEDA as an associate member, and all this does is allow CEDA to issue revenue obligations to Linfield within the city's jurisdictional boundary. And then, second, to approve a resolution allowing CEDA and Linfield to issue revenue obligations. So what's the city not doing? The city is not assuming any debt of its own. The city, as an associate member of CEDA, the city is not responsible for any financial or other obligations of CEDA, and the city does not have any responsibility concerning the issuance of any revenue obligation or any other debt issued by CEDA or the Linfield School. So with that, staff is recommending council adopt a resolution approving the city's joining CEDA as an associate member, and a resolution approving the issuance by CEDA of revenue obligations for the benefit of Linfield Christian School. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions, and we have members of Linfield Christian School here, if you'd like to speak to them.
Thank you for the staff report. Are there any questions of staff at this time? Seeing how there's no questions, at this time, I'm going to open the public hearing. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do, we have three speakers.
Can you call the first one?
The first speaker is Dennis Hollingsworth, to be followed by Terry Cutter.
Senator, always a pleasure, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Dennis Hollingsworth, Vice Chairman of the Board of Trustees for Linfield Christian School, and just wanted to thank you, Mr. Mayor, for spearheading this issue, and for Mr. Adams and Mr. Watson in your shops for expediting this so that Linfield is able to take advantage of these low-interest rates and refinance this debt. I think that's one thing that we wanted to clarify. Does not, it's not exactly clear from the wording, but this is to refinance existing debt, not for new construction. So we're here to answer any questions and just offer our gratitude for your taking this up in an expeditious manner.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Terry Cutter, to be followed by our final speaker, Deanna Eliano.
Mr. Header, welcome tonight.
Oh, Mayor and city council members, I'm here just to echo Mr. Hollingsworth's comments. We certainly appreciate you expediting this, and I just want to let you know that the 10-year estimated savings from this is about $2.5 million for the school. Oh, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Next speaker, please.
And the last speaker is Deanna Eliano.
Deanna, good to see you this evening.
Good to see you, Mayor and council members. Thank you so much for having us here. Really, just came to offer our appreciation for you taking this up for us, and thank you for the report, Mr. Watson. It's truly a real benefit to us to be able to have this savings and to reinvest those savings back into the kids and the programs. As you know, Linfield has been a longstanding educational institution within this city of Temecula, and we've appreciated your ongoing support in our programs there, and this certainly will help us to advance that and continue our fiscal stability and hopefully educating kids for many, many years to come. So, it is just the refinancing of existing debt, so just to make that more obtainable for us in terms of that payoff, so we're not proposing any new construction at this time. Thank you very much, be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers? Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing none, we're, at this time, we're going to close the public hearing, open the council discussion. Anybody have any comments, questions, discussion? I see none, so we'll go ahead and take a motion to approve the two resolutions. I presume, Mr. City Attorney, we can take them at one time?
That's correct.
Okay, so why don't we do that?
Move approval?
Second.
Of both resolutions in succession. Please cast your vote. I know you're waiting for me, I had to pull this thing up. There we go. And that passes five, or rather, 4-0 with one abstention, Ms. Edwards. Thank you, folks. We're getting to the end of our meeting, let's see, commission reports, Mr. Sullivan?
None tonight.
How about you, Mr. Watts?
Ditto.
How about you, Mr. Levine?
Oh, just briefly. So I just wanted to let you know, Mr. Mayor and city council, that our community services master plan is clipping along, and also to invite you to the CRC Pool grand reopening July 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, do we have a public safety report tonight?
Yes, we do, good evening. This will be the Temecula Police and Sheriff's monthly report for June. There were 6,666 file numbers generated during this breaking period. This number includes calls for service, deputy initiated files, as well as traffic citations. Our deputies issued 1,536 traffic citations, in addition to 79 parking citations. Deputies investigated 152 traffic accidents, ranging from major injury, minor injury, fender benders, to hit-and-run incidents. Our deputies investigated 105 DUIs and arrested 39 of those. Our commercial enforcement officer issued one citation, the reason being is he was conducting some training during this time and was off on vacation, so that'll resume this month. Quality of life issues, which include loitering and panhandling, our deputies responded to 109 calls for service related to those. And our homeless outreach team pulled 14 files to outreach for homeless. And that is it, thank you.
Thank you very. Mr. Mayor? Yes. Mr., I believe you may have skipped item 16. Did I? I might have.
No, item 16 is actually just a receiving file.
Okay, we'll get to that after this. Thank you for telling me. Anything else, Jim? Any others on the public safety report?
No, that'll be.
Okay, sounds real good. Let's go back to item 16. Let's see.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
There's no need to take vote action on, it's a departmental report.
Okay, so what are you saying I missed?
You didn't miss any.
You didn't.
Oh.
It's just received a file.
Well, thank you. Okay, so who said I missed 16?
I did.
You did? Oh, okay. So you're the author of all this confusion?
I am.
Okay, all right, it's okay. Like I said, it's summertime. All right, now that I've, okay, never mind. Public safety, city manager, what do you got for us?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
You sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, sounds good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing tonight.
Give us some wisdom.
Nothing tonight.
Okay.
No wisdom tonight.
No wisdom tonight. Well, gentlemen, it's up to you at this point.
Move for recess or closure, whatever it's called.
Okay, until July 23rd.
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. We are out of here. Good evening, everybody.